To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of Mexico and as a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Please bow your heads and pray with us. Lord, we gather here before you today asking for you to show us your grace, your kindness, and your eternal light in a world filled with darkness and evil. Let us pray to remember and honor upon police officer Justin Hare, who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. May we ask you to bless this officer and his family and friends, and may we never forget the courage and commitment he made to keeping us safe. In Jesus' name we pray.
Well, everyone will go ahead and start off with other comments and announcements?
Okay, my first. This is my first. Your turn. All right. My name is James Ralperside, and I live at thirty-one twenty-nine Kepner Road, which is in the city of Otis. And I came today to request that y'all help upgrade the rural address signs that are in front of every, supposed to be in front of everybody's house. And I brought two examples that are in front of my house. This was the old sign, right here. I wonder if you can still read this. There, if you go right up to it, you might be able to see a three, a one, a two, and an up. This is what it looks like today. I just turned it around and put the new numbers on that we could get about six, seven years ago. You can't, the county can't get these numbers anymore. This design and the shape and all that, you just can't get them. So, the county's gone to a different deal. I don't have an example with me. But, anyway, to give you an idea of how bad these can be, you can't read these in my department at all. I've actually taken a flashlight trying to find a house. I'm going to do it along with your partner. You can't even read a part at night. You gotta take a flashlight and go right up to these things and barely make out these numbers. So, that becomes a real problem trying to find addresses. I know several examples. I don't have time to go into them. But one of them was recently down Blacker Village Road. It's getting close to dark, and we couldn't find it. There was no address signs whatsoever. None, nothing. This time, you couldn't read or this. No posts. All we had saw were mailboxes. And we couldn't find the address. Luckily, Mr. Josh Mack responded, and he knew that address because he'd been there before, maybe a year before that. And that's the only reason we could find that location, because thanks to Mr. Mack finding it. So, anyway, there's several ideas on how to do this. One thing we need to know is the county has an address ordinance that we revised when I was on commission in two thousand and eighteen. And it says in there that the owner is responsible for their signing. Well, anyway, the comment is that Kelly has tried to encourage people to get these signs, you know, even, you know, six, seven years ago, to get these, and then the new ones, the county's given them out free and charged. But we don't have enough people responding. So, I think the commission needs to figure out a way to upgrade these signs so they're to the new standard, the new signs with the red number, the little different red number. But anyway, I think that's something that y'all can talk about. Put the, I'd like to put this on the agenda, have a future agenda, and thought y'all would be, you know, reconsidered. So, I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate, I hope that y'all will put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners and Norbert Rampe, resident of Eddy County. It's storytime for my three minutes. I'm a personal witness to this event. A generation ago, the Carlsbad mother, a member of a moderately well-known family, persuaded slash forced her pregnant daughter to travel to certain Texas to have a murder for higher committed on the preborn child. The parents of the teenage father wanted to adopt to help raise their grandchild, and offers his grandmother of the child in the womb rejected. Mother and pregnant daughter were intercepted on their way to the El Paso airport between Carlsbad and White City by the young father and his parents, who begged the two women hell-bent on killing the unborn child to reconsider and save the child's life. The sheriff's deputy stopped by and after ascertaining the situation, informed the father and grandparents of the unborn child that he was powerless to stop the murder in progress. When the grandfather realized that he was as powerless as a law enforcement officer, he broke down, sobbing uncontrollably right there on the side of the road. I don't know how many of you have ever witnessed such utter despair. For me, it was the only time in my life. A decades-old slogan goes, "Only you can prevent forest fires." In the absence of federal and state protections, only you can pass an ordinance that prevents preborn children from being exterminated in Eddy County. Our eastern neighbors and the town of Edgewood have led by example. Be brave enough to follow the trail they blaze.
Is there any other public comments or announcements? Seeing now, we'll move into our service awards. First, we'll start with Oranda Viejas, Sheriff's Office, ten years.
All right, three, two, one.
Next, we have Alexander Duchesne, Sheriff's Office, ten years.
I don't think he's going to be here. He was working last night.
Next, we have William Marion, Sheriff's Department, five years.
He's not going to be here either. They're out there.
And next, we have Gerard Green, Public Works, five years.
We work at the moment. We work! We work! We work that they take these gloves off.
Can I take a short picture out?
And then go back to work.
And whenever we look at the general funds, you're gonna see very similar trends in revenue and expenditures here. Uh, you know, a lot of the GRT and gas taxes flowing through that fund, so you see the same increase in total revenues. And once again, you know, the account's been very consistent in terms of its expenditures year over year in the general fund as well. Uh, and then quickly, you know, cash and investments in the general fund, same thing, you know, cash is getting accumulated as a result of just, you know, heightened revenues over the past few years. Um, with that, you know, we'll switch into a couple of value-added suggestions. Uh, you know, we say this every year, but I think it's important. We want you all to treat us as a year-round resource, although the audit only takes up, you know, maybe four months out of the year, four to five months. Uh, the best way to prevent problems and accounting issues is to consult early and often, so you know, we're always there to add a perspective, especially related to, uh, the GASB framework. So the GASB framework is the part of USGAP that dictates how the county's financial statements get presented. And that's an area that we practice in pretty much all day, every day, so we're happy to assist, you know, whether it just be with technical questions, training, guidance. Uh, the standard-setting body is changing things relatively quickly in the GASB world, so you know, it can be a lot to keep up with. Additionally, we always like to recommend, uh, you know, we, we speak with your, your IT department a little bit as a part of the audit every year. We don't do an IT audit, but we do a few evaluations, uh, and you know, we feel like you have a pretty solid team there who are trying to stay out ahead of things, but we encourage you to continue to make IT a priority. Uh, as you know, it's a very quickly changing landscape, uh, and unfortunately, more and more state local governments, uh, you know, are targeted every year, so, uh, you know, that's something to continue to keep on your radar. And so, you know, I wanted to give a big thank you to Brianna, Brianna and her team, uh, Roberta as well, Jessica, uh, you know, Treasurer's Office with Lori. Uh, really, we view all of you as a, you know, a member of our team. We can't complete this audit without the effort that you all put forward. We, it's a pretty heavy lift, the amount of documentation and requests that we have to obtain from you every year in order to, to do our work. So we really appreciate the effort there and really just appreciate the opportunity to work with the county and hope to continue, uh, you know, building that relationship as we move on into the future. Uh, but with that, I will stand for questions if there are any.
Questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I, well, I sort of do. So how many years running is this for unmodified? I think that's a pretty neat thing, cause that's both of y'all should share in that excitement.
I think the years in unmodified, it'll be nine years now, cause I've been here ten, so the year when I came in, ten years, going on ten years.
I think it'd be interesting to see if there's any other, who else has carried a record like that. So I think folks in Eddie County should be proud of the way they'll handle our financials and, uh, make sure that the way we conduct business is spot-on every time, so. And that's to both of y'all and to your whole team. I mean, I appreciate it and, and it's nice to know, so.
Yeah.
If my memory serves me correct, it wasn't always this way till somebody like you came along.
Yeah, and it is a really big accom- accomplishment and, you know, congratulations to the finance team and all the offices here in the county, cause really, it does take all the offices to comply with everything that finance, you know, the burden of finance it puts on you, so yeah, congratulations to everybody. It's a really good accomplishment. And thank you, Eric, for everything you do. We really enjoy working with you and your team. You guys do a really good job, so.
Likewise, thank you very much for having me today as well. It's always a pleasure working with, with you and your team.
With that, if we don't have any other questions, we do need a motion to approve resolution R. twenty-four, twenty-one, please.
We got two motions and a second.
Yeah, I have, uh, Carlson is making the motion and Beard is the second. Is that okay?
That works for me.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our presentation by the Eddie County Fair Board, President Dylan Pinson and Director John Pittman. Good morning, Goodman.
Good morning, Rob. Thank you for having us today. We just wanted to leave you guys a, a quick update on the Eddie County Fair and Eddie County Fairgrounds. We've been, uh, doing a lot out there the last several years and planning for the future and, uh, we're in the middle of designing a, a new building, which you guys, I think we talked most of you guys about, you guys are aware of, we're about, uh, half to three quarters funded on a, on a twenty-five million dollar, uh, building on the Eddie County Fair side. So, um, we, we've talked about budgets. I, I appreciate getting to follow the audit guy. Instead, we seem to be cash-flubbed, so that's a shame. But, uh, you know, we, and you guys know, you guys have all participated, we, we've talked about this, the importance of agriculture, leadership and development of our youth, um, statistics for, for longer than we've been alive have shown the importance of the, the leadership and development of, of our youth through four ages and FFA programs. As a board, we're, we're extremely passionate about that. And our, our main goal every year is to put on a fair and do it in a decent facility. We've, year after year, shown that our community supports our fair more than any other fair in New Mexico. Our community comes together and supports our kids bigger than state fair, bigger than Eastern, bigger than Lee County, by, by quite a bit, actually. And so, we just wanted y'all to be aware and, and we'd like y'all to continue to participate. Y'all have been awesome. Help with, with the facilities next to us. I know that there's an RFPL that we're currently working on, um, to try to incorporate, you guys' side with our side a little bit better, make that flow a little better and give us some better options of growth and improvement within the, the Horse Council side, the Rogio side. So, uh, you know, there's, there are, there are some things that, you know, just within our group and you guys are well aware of, like, uh, how Lee County supports their, their fair and Rogio every year. I think last week, they approved a two and a half million dollar budget just for their concert program. I think they approved another one point three million dollar budget just for capital improvements this year. That doesn't include their operating side. I don't know that that will push them close to five million dollars, I'm guessing, total for their investment and their community and their investment and their youth, um, going forward, because you, you guys are the leaders and developers from, mostly from businesses, right? When you got involved in your community. So you, you guys understand what it means to, to bring up development and leadership within a community. And, uh, and I think Lee, Lee County's invested greatly in their future. And we're just hoping that we can continue to work together and, and invest in the future of our county as well. And, and we're doing that. We're, we're putting our money where our mount is, uh, and our, our efforts in, in building a state of our facility. The facility that we're building on, on the private side of the fairgrounds will be, um, it will be the largest, uh, I would say, most technical facility in the state. You know, when, when the state was struggling to have a fair in twenty-twenty, they couldn't quite make up their mind what needed to happen when we asked for their help. But, uh, here's some pictures of, uh, of the new livestock facility. But the state reached out to us and asked us to put on a replacement show that year in, in our facilities. Our facilities are some of the most rundown in the state. Where anywhere I've ever been actually ever, we have the most rundown facility. So, um, when we can add this, I think we can bring, uh, a lot of people, a lot of attention, a lot of shows in this building. We do have a flex space, so we can move some stuff out and put some more community, uh, activities in. In some of this barn, we're gonna have heated and cooled for that. We are gonna have some larger conference rooms also that can be rented out for the community. The next phase after this particular building is, is just a, an exhibition building, a community building. But, uh, we plan on being able to hold somewhere around twenty-five hundred people in it. Whether it's an indoor concert or any of the hollies of the world that wanna have their Christmas party, which can't now. There's only the civic center, there's nothing else in the community that can hold, you know, some of these larger events inside, so. We were just wanting to give you guys a heads up. We appreciate all that you've done. We appreciate the effort, uh, from the county. Public Works has been, been a lot of help the last several years, uh, improving the facility as they can. We kind of made a, a spot on, on y'all's property last year that wasn't being used for much into a, a parking area. We appreciate that from, you know, the sand and the gravel, the dirt, the, the equipment, and we hope that we can continue to get that support also this year. We, we are, um, I asked money before, interested in the RFP and, and we're putting that together and hopefully, uh, if you guys have any questions, when y'all already see that there are comments, then you can reach out to us and we can, we're, you guys do that and we appreciate you working with us on, on that. So, um, you know, a- at the end of the day, we are just a, a nonprofit bunch of volunteers, similar to a lot of y'all's lives, I, I know, but the more funding we get, the, the more we can do for our communities. The more we can go these kids, and it, it's adults, it's not just show animals. There's a lot of people that, that are on the open side of this that, that participate and compete in, you know, gardening or, or household cooking or whatever all those different programs are on the open side for the community as well. And, um, if we could, you know, the more funding we can get, the more, the more we can go and do. On the building side, uh, PY Foundation has stepped up and they're a huge contributor. And, and the rest of us, every day, we're meeting tomorrow, we're meeting with ExxonWheeler in the morning. We're meeting with, with businesses, uh, every day, trying to raise that next ten million or that last ten million that we're still short on this building. But we are, we're reaching out to all the different foundations and companies and, and trying to build this thing on our own. So we appreciate that. There, there are options. You know, we've talked lately, we, you know, we're sitting there last week and we've talked about this before. It's been brought up before and we were completely against it. I don't know why, but we look at what Lee County puts into their facility and, and I'm asking Dylan, what, why, why do we own this bu- this, why do we own this privately? I don't know. It's been like that for a long time in Eddie County. But really, uh, should the county at some point take it over? I know Peyton has built several buildings in Artesia and donated them back to the government, right? The swimming pool, the rec center, the library, all these things have been built privately and donated to the city and then the city takes them over and, and maintains them. I don't know that that should be part of the conversation, really. You know, if Lee County owns their facilities and they put five million dollars into their fair every year and they have an advisory board, uh, I may be speaking out of turn for our board members. They might be against that, but I don't know why. Because at the end of the day, we're just trying to get resources to children and, and the community. And if, if the best way to get those resources backed out to our community is for the county to own the facilities, I don't know that that's a bad thing. I think we still have all the volunteers, all the families that participate and, and a board, which would then be called an advisory board. So that's just recently come back around within our conversation and maybe that's, maybe that's something that you guys visit about also, if that's a better way to get resources back out to the community, would be for you guys to actually own everything. I don't, I don't think we'd be against that, maybe.
And just, I'm not sure if I'll be on, uh, if John likes to talk, but, um, the Eddie County Fairgrounds is, there's only two fairgrounds in the state that are privately owned. And we're all about public service and service to the community, but it is very hard as a private organization to raise money for that when everybody's like, it's the Eddie County Fair. They don't under, the public doesn't understand that there's a privates, because it's not anywhere else. It's just Eddie County that were private. So it's very hard for us to put on such a big event and we don't have the capital to do it.
Well, thank you guys for making your presentation. We really do appreciate all the work you guys do. You guys do a great job and we really look forward to working with you guys in the future on this and we'll definitely be opening up conversations.
Can I add a little bit to that? I've been to a lot of these arenas he's talking about and I'm speaking of the arena. What we have in Eddie County at the fairgrounds is not much. Uh, it's pretty dilapidated. Lee County has excellent facilities. Uh, John though, for, um, I'm more interested fixing up the Horse Council end of it than the other. I'm very much in favor of the fairgrounds, whatever we can do, but I think everybody ought to consider being in one of the most wealthy counties in the state of Mexico. I'm very much on board to support any and everything we can do for that fair board and, and the Horse Council, so.
And we're, we're getting more involved with the Horse Council side through this, uh, this process of working on right now. The Horse Council has maintained the county side of the property, which is where the arenas are, the indoor arena, the outdoor arena, uh, the stalls and things like that. We're, we seem to be coming together through, through maybe this RFP process. We're, we're not completely there, but we're talking about combining all of that. And Horse Council, like, he's on both. He's on Horse Council and the fair. Haley Klein is, has been a part of both. She's not on our board, but she's very involved in both. So through this process, I've, we're probably planning on bringing Horse Council into our board, so, uh, and making that more of one organization. And that way, too, we just keep one, you know, nonprofit, one set of boards, things like that. It's keep it a little more simple.
I'd like to point out that our fair supports the kids and the community more than any fair I've ever seen. There, I mean, there's no midway. It's not a big thing on the entertainment. Entertainment is, is a, is a sidebar. Everything is about the community with our fair and it, it impresses me to no end. I mean, you look at the sales and, and, and what these kids do out there, that, cause that's the future, right there is those kids. And what we do for those kids is huge with our fair, so. I, as, as sheriff, I'm just gonna tell you right now that I, that our fair is second to none. I know Lee County puts on, and they put on some big concerts and all that stuff. But what we do for our kids here, no one else comes close in the whole state.
And we appreciate the twenty-twenty, cause you're a big part of the reason we got to do what we did. We appreciate your support. Uh, and, and on that, we are one of the only fairs that does not take a commission on the children. So other fairs operate by taking five or ten percent. So last year, we were about one point one million dollars that was raised and spent on the kids, above and beyond all other fairs in the state. And we took zero of that. We just continue to beg people for money and it's not easy to do. Like, you have to go beg people for money. It's, well, we're doing it now. So, but we don't, and, and that will have to be one of the next steps. We, we, we so far have been able to get all that money to the kids, but our next steps in order to maintain these facilities is to take a portion of their sales from every kid, you know, five or ten percent. I think Eastern and State are, are ten percent, um, that they take back from the kids and then they make themselves a hundred thousand dollars and that's what they operate on. We would rather try to keep that in the kids' hands if possible for their futures.
And why don't you reiterate how much money our sale raised compared to the other counties?
The, the next closest county is Lee County and they are, we're in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. They went to nine last year, so maybe the year before they were seven. I think State Fair was between six and seven, uh, which may be like the third next. But we, we do fundraisers. We're constantly do. We did one in Artesia this past weekend called Pot Gold, right? We did one in Carlsbad. We usually do it around Valentine's Day and, and have a, the kids are always selling stuff and Hakes say begging for money, but we're always putting on, on these different things and then we just call and send letters to every business asking them to donate or come out and buy. SB, of course, always shows up, you know, and buys animals and, um, all of you guys have participated, so. I'm getting old and tired, really. I don't know, just knocking on doors, but we're gonna continue to do that. And, and as an organization, what, you know, Dylan started pushing last year, just job descriptions for board members, expectations for board members. We're trying to create something that can go on, especially with this new facility. We don't want a twenty-five million dollar facility or thirty-five million dollar facility going to waste just because this board moved on. It's gotta go to the next generation and so we're really pushing on training our board members as they come up to keep this thing going for, for as long as it can go, for the lifetime of the facilities. So I, I know you guys get a lot of people asking for money or people just coming by with some great idea for the year or whatever, or, or boards that flounder, but we aren't that group and we're trying to prevent that from happening within our group. The PY Foundation has sent down consultants to spend two days with us, uh, kinda like we did with CIO those years, you know, with, with just board training, professional board training, so. Trying to make a difference.
I really appreciate all the work that goes into this. I know that it's a, it, it's volunteer work that becomes a full-time job and takes up all your free time and, and it's not easy to go and put on, put this on in front of people and ask for, for anything and to do it continuously each year. I really just applaud what you do because that is a badge of the community to the kids, so, thank you guys.
Good job. Good job.
Next, we have our annual accessory report to commission. In accordance with state statute, the accessory is mandated to provide an annual report to the board of commissioners. I believe Adrian, uh, sent you guys the reports prior so that you could look at those in time of need. And I would like to briefly just highlight some key points mentioned in those reports. January is an incredible, an incredibly busy month for us as we receive mobile home livestock and personal property renderings, as well as property owners requesting their head of household and veteran exemptions. In twenty-twenty-three, we had approximately three hundred and twenty-nine new businesses in the county and we sent out a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty business personal property rendering forms, four thousand and eighty-six mobile home postcards and three hundred and twenty livestock rendering forms. All of the forms must be returned by our office by the end of February to avoid a five percent penalty. Uh, also during this time, the appraisers are finalizing all pending sales, permits, splits and reappraisal. It is crucial that they complete these tasks so that accurate values can be included on the notice of values. And in accordance with the state statute, residential properties that are not at market will, uh, not at market value will, will receive a three percent annual increase. If overall property values in the county were to decrease, adjustments would also be made to reflect those changes. At this time, we are not seeing values decrease. We're seeing it increase dramatically. Uh, we just finished staging and hosting our values and our notice of value file has been sent to the printer. And, um, hopefully by the end of the, uh, month, that will be completed and then our notice of values will be mailed out on April first. In April, property owners have a thirty-day window to protest their values on the notice of value. Last year, we had seventy-four protests and two of those cases went to a formal hearing. In June, we receive our state assessed values from the Property Tax Division, which are then entered into our system to run our certification, reflecting state assessed and locally assessed values. Uh, certification values must be sent to the state by June fifteenth for analysis and determination of our tax rates for the year. In twenty-twenty-three, the county experienced an overall growth of a little over five hundred and eighty-eight million dollars, with state assessed values seeing the largest gain of a little over four hundred and one million, followed by non-residential improvements at nine hundred, or, I'm sorry, ninety-four million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one and residential improvement of thirty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand and sixteen. In September, uh, we receive our tax rates from the Department of Finance. Once the commission approves the rate, the tax rule is prepared and forwarded to the treasurer for the distribu- distribution of tax bills. Although the Treasurer's Office sends out the tax bills, our office, our office handles numerous inquiries from property owners regarding their bills. In twenty-twenty-three, the deed and mapping department completed a total of three thousand five hundred and twenty-one deeds, one hundred and ten subdivisions and forty-eight boundary surveys. Additionally, there were one thousand one hundred and fifty building permits issued in Artesia, two thousand one hundred and forty-five permits in Carlsbad and a hundred and eighty-two state-issued permits. Our appraisers follow a six-year reappraisal plan and use the Eagle View Program to, uh, for efficient and accurate reappraisals. With the twenty-twenty-four flyover completed, we are expecting our new images very soon. We, uh, finally received our new vehicle that was ordered in twenty-twenty-two. We received that in July of twenty-twenty-three. Due to COVID, uh, it was on, put on hold for quite a while. And because we have new appraisers and to address the backlog, we have ordered two more vehicles this year to, uh, purchasing them through our one percent fund. We have a four-year contract with Total Assessment Solutions Corp. Uh, they delivered their annual presentations to the Eddie County Commission on March fifth. According to TAST, there were nine hundred and eighty-eight new wells drilled at Eddie County in twenty-twenty-three. In twenty-twenty-three, some of our key accomplishments included signif- significant staff changes by adding new appraisers, a mapper, a deed analyst and a clerk. We also started reviewing our agriculture applications for accurate data and scanned all documents into the Tyler system. As we look forward to twenty-twenty-four, our main goal is to have a fully staffed team. This includes filling two appraiser positions and providing cross-training for our appraisers to assess, to assess both commercial and residential properties. Additionally, we are cross-training our clerks to handle mobile homes, livestock and personal property. In twenty-twenty-four, several of our employees will be engaging in various classes and training programs. This will range from initial training for some, advancing to higher certification levels for others and continuing education for those already certified. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me by phone or visit my office. I will be more than happy to assist in answering any questions if you may now. Thank you. If nothing else, we invite you to come into our new office. We just have a group of, it's beautiful and we're thankful. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Next, we have fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget adjustment request. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, what we're asking for this morning is a reallocation of the budget that's already in our current budget from capital and lease and our construction fund. What we've done is we've, uh, we've got the opportunity to buy us a diesel truck from, it's on the lot, it's readily available. Um, and normally when we've been buying trucks, they've been eighteen, twenty-four months out still, so it's something that really hasn't recovered. So we, we found this truck, what, what our intention is with this is to pull a goose neck trailer with all of our lighter equipment, our brooms, our backhoes, some of the trucks that really doesn't need a tractor trailer and a mobile boy. So that's where we're coming today, is asking approval for some reallocation funds, uh, to come through this truck. This on the lot that we can have a new fiscal year. Questions?
I have a thought, but.
I know we can't buy cars anywhere, but we can find them at the, uh,
The diesel three-quarters, um, it's off state pricing, um, it's sitting in our per kit, middle of the way, trucks there. We've already got the quote on it.
Look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment request. Motion to second?
Henry?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next, we have this clear twenty-three, twenty-four growth maintenance budget adjustment request.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we're bringing this to you this morning. Um, what we have is, is we're, we're in the time of year where we're doing budget. We're doing, um, really allocation and a maintenance plan for our spring, spring planning. We, uh, we requested, it was nine million last year in capital budget for several projects to finish up the West Loop, if you. This, this funding was for, um, was originally inti- This this funding was for um, was originally intended for a little water crossing between Hill Doggo and Dark Canyon um, as part of the West Lake Phase Two, if you. What we've what we've encountered with that, uh, we've worked through the planning and design process is there's some additional requirements from BLM, some right-of-way requirements, some surveying, some environmental studies um, that we're we're diligently working through to have approval on this. We've got a a pretty solid design on it, but it's just not something that we're going to be able to complete and do this fiscal year. So what we're what we're requesting today is reallocation from the capital in our road construction project fund, our road maintenance fund. Um, we we have the opportunity to go out and further our road maintenance program, which I'm going to talk about during the department updates, but we're asking for a reallocation of this from the capital line item to the road maintenance line item that we're going to um have spent and spending this year on a road maintenance project. That is the intention. Um, so a- and I and I was going to talk about this during department updates, but I guess I'll go ahead and talk about it now. We're evaluating the completion of the loop. We're evaluating it. We're going out, we're looking at the who what where's and we have some obstacles to overcome with bringing that across from Carrasco, and that's also in my department update is this this project is still technically proceeding with the thirty-one, two eighty-five project that just left. And we're still intending to do the Carrasco realignment project. Um, but we have some significant hurdles to overcome um, that at some point, we're going to have to sit down and have the discussion is is the pain worth the gain? Is what we're going to have to go through and the challenge is worth the effort and the cost to push this through? We can do anything with time and money. It's how much time and how much money and is it really worth it to our taxpayer dollars to go do it? We have some significant hurdles to overcome to take that road from Carrasco to National Park Highway. Some existing utilities, some topography that's going to be challenging to overcome with drainage. And tho- those are the ones I'm se- I'm concerned about is the utilities and the total. So especially the utilities that are already on the ground. So at some point, that'll be the conversation, but we're going to bring you that in a very simplistic look and red lines on a map say, here's what we have to overcome. Is it worth it? Here's how much it's going to cost. Do anything with time and money. But it's, is it worth it? So to answer your question, long answer to a short question is, yes, we're intending to, we're we're playing on it, but I we need to make sure that's part of the overall plan that we want to accomplish, so.
But what this Dark Canyon crossing between Dark Canyon Road and Hill Doggo, that would not necessarily be part of
The intention would be that with bringing the loop from Carrasco across the sixty-two and eighty would tie into the Dark Canyon road so that it creates the the loop. So that's where we would push that back to that Dark Canyon and do that little water crossing through Dark Canyon, Hill Doggo. And I'm not saying that it's not even worth doing that one just to give them another access further down sixty-two and eighty. And tha- and that's really for what we have planned, um, probably really worth the money. We've got to get through the BLM hurdles. They're uh, I'm not going to say they have their eye on Jason, but they got their eye on Jason with former projects. So we're 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 walking through this one diligently and making sure that we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed before we we drop a blade and cut the road, so.
Concern is that crossing is beneficial to the traffic that goes west from there to the Queen area. I know some of those people
Well, we're
like a little better road for that area.
Well, we are working, I mean, we have a little water crossing, we have a little water crossing going on right now in Dark Canyon. Um, that's if you turn and go west and not east. This one, the way this one's planned is this is going to be a a four-point curve from Hill Doggo on Dark Canyon going back to the east, going down to the highway. If you go the other way towards the uh Thunder Run pit, we're doing between that intersection and Thunder Run, we're doing a little water crossing down there uh, much like we did Marathon, that we're putting in a significant section with the header walls and the apron. That's ongoing right now. That's actually, I'm glad to say that, I'll put that on my list. Um, that's going to be complete here in the next couple of weeks. So we're, we've done that one. We did that with our bridge construction money this year. Um, and that was one of the crossings that every time Dark Canyon ran, it it always washed out. And that we would have to hustle down there and get get filled back in so they can keep operating. So that's one of these little water crossings that we intend to do as we keep going up Dark Canyon. The next one we're going to look at is probably do some concrete paving in front of Thunder Run, because that's the other one that has that water comes in front of it. We're going to put six inches of concrete or whatever we do right there in front of it so that kind of like the West Loop, as it rains, we go clean it off and go back to running, so. Yes, no, there i- i- is, that one is probably our our best one for that we always had issues with is that first one past the intersection, so. Um, that is definitely one that we needed to get out there and do it with that plan. And and we did it. We actually had a little bit of cost on it. We did it just like we did Marathon. So Marathons, the few times it's ran, it's worked great, so we're going to continue that process as we do things and um, we we've requested budget for the next year to continue that program with the bridge construction and little water crossing improvement, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Burns on this? Look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment for road maintenance? Second. Motion in two seconds, please call for a vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next we have set meeting to approve cannabis at Carlsbad for special election.
Uh, any other questions? Um, Carlsbad School has a special all-male allow election, election day is Friday, it's coming Friday twenty-second. Um, we have to approve the cannabis uh no sooner than six days after the election date and uh no longer than ten days. So we're looking at maybe next Thursday, next Friday. I know that there is the legislative update in Chavis County at ten on Thursday morning, so, you know, it'll be like the last meeting, it'll just be two minutes.
Yeah, I can't beat Thursday.
Okay.
Are you going to be available on Friday?
Friday. This coming Friday?
Next Friday.
The twenty-ninth, right?
Next Friday in the morning?
I can do that. We look for, you got two, you got three?
Yeah, yeah, if I need to just come down, I can do that.
Earlier or later. So if we could do eight-thirty on Friday the twenty-ninth, eight-thirty, three.
You already got one tonight? And I will not be here, so Mr. Burns will be filling in for me on that meeting.
Just like we will get a week after.
Maybe we need to postpone.
The tenth day is uh Monday, March, so that if that's better for everybody, we can do that also.
Yeah, that's fine.
Work Friday?
Then we don't play back to the end, yeah.
Yes, okay. I do need a motion for this one, please.
Go ahead.
Second. Motion in a second.
Okay, Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Commissioner Carlson would like to pull A dash twenty-four dash twenty-two agreement with King Ministries for Construction Management for Eddie County for further discussion. Is there anything else that would like to be pulled? Think we give a motion to approve the resolution consent agenda with the exception of A dash twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Go ahead.
Second. Motion in a second, please call for a vote.
Henry?
Yes. This is our people just a little.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Almost got him. Uh, I, I guess, what will they do, Jason? Because here's my question, because you and I have had several discussions about you putting on inspectors overseeing the jobs, okay? You run the public works. What are they going to do?
So the intention for this particular construction management agreement is is not only specifically and I think what you're referring to is our upcoming projects out in the complex. This is not specifically meant just for that. We have them currently right now as as our, and I guess what this is, is our specialized inspectors, our expert inspectors. And we currently have one of their expert inspectors out there right now, um, overster or not, I guess overste would be a bad word, but supervising the cell six construction. That is a landfill expert that has thirty-plus years of landfill experience and public works experience. And he's over there making sure that what we designed, what we paid for, what we are paying for is is getting put in. And with this, and this is something else that we've always discussed, is I fully and wholly disagree that inspectors should, that work for the designers. That that is, that is a huge conflict interest for me. Your inspectors that are out there ensuring what our expectations are need to work directly for the county. They need to, they need to ride for the county brand. That's what this is. When we have the inspectors with cell six, as we start the complex, as we do some of these major road projects, that's the intention for this, the specialized expert inspectors, um.
This specifically is for the landfill though currently right now.
That's all we currently have, so, um.
But everyday stuff, we're going to oversee it, so.
Yes.
In our inspector.
Which
So we want to be, our everyday like road projects, so.
Yeah.
We will have our own inspector out there that's employed by the.
Yes, our our road projects are covered by us right now. We have our project manager and our inspector that are covering our road projects.
So it'll only be those special projects?
Yes, this will be just predominantly the special projects. Yes. Well, I didn't want to do the thing. No, we're we are not, this is not duplicating that, and that's the thing, I I have a great team of project people right now. Hazer and and John Benzley are doing us an amazing job on the road projects. I'm about to talk about a bunch of them. But at the end of the day, they they are not specialized for some of these other projects that we have upcoming.
Yeah, I see my sale house, the landfill and stuff.
Yeah, so thi- this is for additional services. I mean, because and really, I'm overworking Hazer and John Benzley. That's the other deal too. I'm overworking those guys. And 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 where this contract also helps us is this is on a as-needed basis. We hire them for what we need and then when we're done, it's, we're not looking for something else for them to do. It's it's specific contract-based for a specific project. For for the individual special projects. The road projects, we're going to continue to cover and house. And and we have, and we're managing the cell six. So we are managing. It comes through us. He is an inspector. He turns in his daily reports and his quantity reports, and he makes sure that the specs are being followed. That's, I mean, that's essentially what they do. They are the daily oversight that he's out there every day making sure that they're not digging too deep, making sure the quantities that they're reporting to be paid for are accurate to to make sure that the specs are being followed, because I mean even, I mean, cell six is a great example. That project came in one point four million dollars under the engineered estimate. He's out there every day making sure they're not cutting corners to try to gain some of that money. And and I'll just, on cell six, cell six is going great. That contractor out there, they're moving their faster than we ever thought they could. And they're right on budget and right on schedule. So and he's doing the daily reports and the pictures and and he's reviewing all their payoffs that come in. And he works for us, so at the end of the day, we know he's going to come tell us the truth. And he's not going to go make sure and cover up anything for the designer that's trying to cover up mistakes or.
So when when other people are hiring the inspectors and stuff and they've had nonprofit overhead and stuff to them, we never win.
That's right. You're home, son. So.
Any other questions? We'll look for a motion to approve A dash twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Over.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for a vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Next we have travel request consent agenda.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I'll make motion to approve travel request consent agenda as presented.
Motion in a second, please call for a vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any emergency business legislative comments announcements. Um, I did email each one of you a full um list of bills that were signed and vetoed by the governor. Um, I don't want to go into the thirteen page of all of them that were signed and vetoed, but I will say all of our parties in Eddie County were signed. There were two bills, two House bills, two thirty-one and two thirty-eight that were not. However, those fundings were put in partially into House Bill Two. So if you have any other questions on the list that I sent you, please reach out to me. Uh, with that, we'll move into elected official department head comments.
Chairman Commissioners, so I hadn't given an update in a while. I wanted to come, and this this might be a little lengthy, so I'll put the timer on it, but um, I wanted to come give you a kind of what's going on. We we have lots going on this time of year, so. Um, first and foremost, Southeast Loop will be open this week. It is completed and done and all the way from start to finish. This this worked out kind of exactly the way we wanted it. We, the overall construction took four months and we started at the end of September. And we've we've really kind of had to extend this out to where we are today to get the uh final O G F C in down, which is a temperature-sensitive type treatment, so. They are, the strippers are in town and as soon as they finish striping and they're cutting the Ed Rumble strips, the road will be open. This lined up perfectly with with DOT as they were able to complete the intersection at uh sixty-two, one eighty and six oh five, so that's this week. It's, we came in, um, with the overall project, we were about one point two million dollars under budget from what their original business quotas and significantly underscheduled. So we were able to take that savings and that's how we finished the project, which was originally planned for being county money. So we were able to finish the O G F C, the striping, rumble strips, and expand the intersection at six oh five a little bit up through the state road with the saved money with all grant money. So tha- and that's also going to line up great with, you know, the next thing we're going to roll into is um, New Mexico thirty-one, two eighty-five. And DOT awarded that last week. They opened it, awarded it to a local contractor. Um, so here within the next month or so, that one's going to commence and start. There is not, probably, with by the time they get the contract and the pre or the the award meetings, um, pre- pre-construction.
They have ramp up and all that.
Yeah, so we're we're probably looking next couple of months ago, June, June or so. Um, so that one is awarded and will be starting here soon. With that, um, we have our plans completed and we are going to reach out to the contractor that was awarded and coordinate to have our Carrasco realignment project done. Um, we've kind of been diligently waiting on this. Um, the county's going to realize some efficiency measures. Essentially what's going to happen is, as they do the the cut on the DOT project, they're going to do the fill on our project, so. It's um, it only makes sense to do it that way and and what it does is it um, aligns that, makes it a four-way intersection. So we're we're proceeding with that as DOT starts with their project. And that's kind of what I went into during the item about where that goes from there. Um, but we're, we are planning that project. Um, with that, we've been having several talks with N M D O T and, um, Roberta just gave an update on our two bills and the thirty-one money. If, if it's there, now we gotta go get it. And that's, we've had several talks with them, and they've got, they're on board with us and, and wanting to see that, that before, so, um. We've already got kinda layouts and plans for an expanded, even more intersection at six oh five and thirty-one to do some drug handles and X L D cell lanes and be able to get people off of there. And that's something that we've really had discussions with D O T is, you know, their intention is to foreland everything. They think the answer's to foreland. I told them, guys, that's great, but you really need to drive down that road and look at the constraints you have and what's existing, CID and your utilities, and a lot of the operators that are currently in your right-of-way that you've let go, so. Um, I told them the problem with thirty-one is, is not the traffic, it's, it's not how much traffic's on it, it's getting traffic on and off the road. X L D cell lanes, improved intersections is what we need. Two lanes, return lanes will keep traffic moving, that's the deal, traffic's a problem, traffic stops. So, if we keep traffic moving, that's what we're looking at doing with our maintenance program, doing some X L D cell, and they're gonna proceed and do their, their foreland over however long it takes D O T to do that over the next D O T year, so. Um, the piece of that with them doing thirty-one two eighty-five and us wanting to look at doing thirty-one six oh five, and then the first place they're wanting to start is thirty-one one twenty-eight. They really wanna look at improving that intersection with the railroad, we talked to the railroad, and they're open to it. Um, and then we're gonna kinda connect the dots, is what we're gonna do, and get that road done. And that's, that's something that D O T realizes that we've really pressed upon them is, guys, we understand what you want to do, but thirty-one's a problem now. It needs something now, not ten years from now. So, there, Francisco's been real supportive over it, Secretary's been real supportive over it, so that one's, that one's moving along diligently. Um, moving into the next ones, we, we submitted for funding from T P F for the west loop and sixty-two one eighty, or a signal project, and doing an improved intersection. That's something that we've presented to county manager, that we've heard several concerns from the community that we need to improve and expand that intersection, um, if nothing else, just to make it easier to find. So, and with us getting ready to do what we're going to present soon, is that intersection will be the, you know, the first piece of it. So, we submitted for state funding to do a signal project there. The other one that we supported and, uh, submitted with the city of Artesia is a signal for Mill Road and twenty-five. So, we submitted both of those this year, and those will be evaluated by the C R P O committee here in May, and we'll see if they're awarded for funding. So, um, either way, those are two projects that we're, we're looking at, and, and really quite honestly, probably need to be done. So, we're working through D O T with that, we've had conversations with them, they're open to both of them. Um, moving along from that, Longhorn Road, we were approached here, uh, so it's been about a month ago, about the interest of improving Longhorn Road. That's kind of our new McDonald Road, um, which, that is a very, very heavily traveled road, and, um, operators are down there trying to keep it as passable as they can, and what ends up happening is that as they blade it, maintenance it, they cut about two or three inches out of it every, every so often, so now it's six foot deep and, and it's a problem. And that's exactly what McDonald was when we started it. So, we were approached, um, by some of our predominant operators down there about the interest of partnering in it. Uh, we had a meeting here, almost been a week or so ago, but they've come back and agreed to help us, um, improve that. They want to, it's important enough to them, and we always enjoy our partnerships with, with our industry partners. So, we've, um, we've put in for that for budget. Right now, they're, they're looking at, um, their portion of it, which is gonna be hauling us the, the majority of the colici for that road to build it back up to where it needs to be so it'll drain. And then we're gonna go down there and, um, probably chip seal and, and make that road a really good road for that. I mean, that's a, that's, that's a needle down into the main of the industry down there. So, that's, that's good, we have the partnerships, and, and out of all the conversations we have, I, I, this is the first one that's actually come to the table since I've been here, I know we've had partners in the past, but that really wanted to do this, came to the table and said, hey, we're, we're willing to do this with you. So, that's, we're gonna encourage that and, and make that one go here pretty quick. Um, and, and they're also, when, when we get ready to do that, we'll bring them to a meeting and, and kinda kick that one off, so. And that was, you burn it dead, so they're, they're really working with us, and we, we enjoy it, we like that, so, um. We also had a meeting with, uh, here last week, they'd reached out through county manager, uh, P S P. We kind of neglected our relationship with P S P. And I know there's mixed feelings about P S P, um, we're gonna make that better. We're gonna, we're gonna start and reengage with P S P. We had a really good meeting here last week with their, uh, road safety board, and, um, they're really excited about re-engaging with us and supporting us and everything we have going on down here. Um, and not just roads, but with everything. They had, they had good things to say about Josh and the sheriff, and, um, they're, they're happy that we're, we're coming back to the table and wanna be a part of it, and really looking forward to supporting us. I think they're gonna come down here within the next couple of weeks and wanna do a road tour with a lot of their members and, and come through New Mexico and, and specifically Eddie County, and, um, see what's all going on here. There's, there's a lot going on, and P S P is interested in it and wants to be here and, and help us how they can. So, that was, that was a good meeting, and, and, um, we're looking forward to moving that forward, so. Um, we're coming into the time of year again, maintenance is starting up, it's warming up. So, we've, we've got a lot going on in all areas of the county. We're currently on grubs, um, that one's getting completely processed and re-chip from start to finish. Um, with your approval today, we're gonna start Armstrong, all the way from Hope through Fox Canyon. We're gonna go down there and, um, and maintenance and microseal that one. Um, we're also starting Curricombe and Buckskin, two oh six all the way through three sixty. Those are kind of the same issue with Longhorn. Um, we go and haul material and blade them every year, and by the time we get back around a year, they've, there's enough traffic on it that it, it blows it out every year, so, um, instead of going over there and spending a half a year hauling material and blading it, we're gonna haul material this year and we're gonna chip it. So, we're gonna do that one with county crews, um, and it's gonna take a little while to haul that material back in there and get it placed, and it'll drain, and get that one chipped. Um, the other thing, we're starting here, I think, today or tomorrow is our fox seal program. We've kept that up with our maintenance plan, um, that's been a significant piece of our maintenance plan. And we have eighty miles of fox seal that's gonna happen here within the next month or so, both in north and south. We've got forty miles in the north and forty miles in the south. So, we're, that's a big piece of maintaining all the roads and investments that we've put on the ground. So, we're, we're furthering that, and, you know, our, our road maintenance program is, is working. The plan that the commission put in place, that we reviewed and presented four years ago, it, it, it's working, if anything, it's working too good. So, we're, we're, and it's not just in one centralized location, we're all throughout the county. Grubs, Armstrong, Curricombe, those are all on opposite ends of the county, Longhorn, that's, that's every corner of the county. So, this is, this is not just a centralized one area, this is, this is everywhere. So, it remained one of our, our top priorities with everything else that we have going on, our special projects, the landfill. We have a lot going on, but our road's still maintained at high priority, so. With that on, stand for any questions, comments?
What are it? I'd like to build on that. You save a billion and a half dollars on the east loop, and we can do an awful lot of speed control in any city performing of your choosing, all over the county.
So, one that I didn't touch on is Happy Valley Park. We've, we've, we've discussed that, we have some hurdles that we're gonna overcome there directly. Um, with Happy Valley, we're repaving Jones. We're doing a significant amount of paving in the, the parks for parking area. We are paving the, uh, the parking area that's next to the road, and we're going to redo the intersection of Jones and five twenty-four right there at the west loop so that it drains right. And then past the end of the paving, we're going to process and chip the rest of the road, all the way going through, um, where we'll fill them. With that, with that, we're gonna pave some speed bumps. We're not gonna put in the bolt downs, we're gonna actually do the speed bumps that hopefully will deter that. Um.
Thank you.
So, we, we are going to do those, and, and especially there with the new park that we, that we expect to be heavily utilized with practices and sports and kids, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a nice park if we get it done. We're redoing all the grass, we're, we're, we're putting in backstops and playfields, we're putting in a walking track, it's gonna be lit up. Um, it's gonna be a nice park, so we're gonna expect to see foot traffic heavily increased there. Um, so we are repaving, we're gonna put some speed control there, and then we'll go from there. We've also here recently put the radar signs and the rumble strips on Dorte, um. We'll, we'll see.
That tie-in with the road port, um, gets it right, with the traffic that goes across the Vegas out there. That all kinda works together.
Are you talking on, through Loving?
Uh, through Malaga.
Yes, so we, we drove down there the other day, but the project that's zero to seven coming in is essentially complete. There's, um, I think they've put on pause the bridge, it's crossing the Black River. Um, they still have some work to complete there, but I know there's some discussions on design and current construction, and then the updates we're getting from D O T and, and the contractor is the Loving project is supposed to be done here in June, so that's kinda what we're expecting, 'cause they're gonna finish the paving through Loving and roll into the intersection project. It's kinda what we're thinking they're gonna do, and what we're, what we're hearing from our conversations, so.
Uh, I'd like, thank you for all you're doing on Longhorn, probably all in Dark Canyon, but that's.
It's been one that's been on the to-do list, but it's, we're there, so with, with, with this, we're having a little, we're gonna spend the money we're getting, but it's somewhere on roads, so that's, that's why we were able to do this. La Herta. We have concerns with roads in La Herta, and we, we've, we've started our conversations with the city, um, and coordinated with them as far as when we do La Herta roads, we're gonna go do La Herta roads. And the city has utilities that are currently in the road that they are wanting to upgrade. And the last thing we wanna do is go put new roads down for water projects to come in on our new roads. So, we are working with the city of Carlsbad to coordinate our efforts so that as they improve their water system, we can improve our roads. It's gonna be kind of the same arrangement that we had for, uh, West Cherry, yeah, I couldn't remember, West three, East six, West Cherry. So, we're there, we're coming, um, we're, we're trying to coordinate efforts so that we don't, you know, cut off our noses by our face. We're trying to work together to make sure this aligns. Um, now with that, we are gonna do some preventative maintenance in La Herta. Um, we have some fox seal coming in, and some of those on a bunch of those roads just to get us to that point. I think we're still fall next year, spring upcoming year, from being in La Herta, but we are gonna go do some preventative maintenance, in some of the areas to get us to that point, so, we're, we're there, we're, we're, we're getting there.
Once we get these roads down, any type of, of utilities or stuff going in, it's gonna have to be forward-facing. We're not chopping up, once you start chopping up, you're paying.
That's, that's been our, that's been our direction and practice here through, since I've been here. And, and it's not just the city of Carlsbad, Artesia, it's everyone, we have several of our, our littler water co-ops that come in and need roads, and, and they've been real good, all of our littler co-ops, our Malagas, our Cotton Woods, our Otis, they've, they've been so far so good with coming and talking to us, and, and we've helped them. We, we, we really try to support our, our smaller water co-ops that are providing utilities to our county citizens, um, and even C I D. We, we go out and help them and support them with equipment maintenance when they call and ask for it. And they've been real good about letting us know, and even us scheduling our road work when they're doing projects. Um, so if they'll call us and tell us they're doing roads, we'll, we'll cut it so it costs them less money, and then we go do the road. I mean, we, this is not just a city of Carlsbad thing that we do, this is something that we're trying to do for all of our utility operators to align our efforts, um, 'cause you're right, it doesn't make us any sense to go redo the road and then come, oh, we need to do that water line too, so. It, we've really tried to develop those relationships and that, helping that communication that they'll call and ask us for help and tell us what they're doing, so help us, help you, and that, there you go.
Stop it.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry, you can come.
It's okay.
Play explosives.
Um, good morning. I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Bowen, uh, pointing out this morning the, about the, the sacri- the ultimate sacrifice that, uh, New Mexico State Police Officer Air, uh, gave to the citizens of New Mexico, uh, tragedy. And it's happening all too often, if you notice. So, yeah, we'll be attending another, yet another, uh, fallen officer's funeral, so, and it was a violent death that we did both of these, that we've done, like, it's, 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 it's a tragedy. Um, I'm gonna have to say that I agree with, uh, Jason on the road, some of the roads are too good. They're, they're, our, our program is working too well, because every time a road gets fixed, I get speed complaints. Um, and so my traffic team is doing the whack-a-mole thing, going from place to place to place, so. It's nice to have really nice roads, um, which we do for the most part, but everybody wants speed on them once they're nice. So, uh, we're, we're, we're working that though, we're working it hard. Um, on, on a, on a serious note though, we are, our fatalities on highways are spiking, and, um, so, and, and that's, that puts me in dilemma, because where, where we have actual deaths is where we have to go and focus. Um, we've, uh, been speaking with some, some ranchers on, uh, Dark Canyon, we were spending a, a, a significant amount of time out there, um, creating a, giving a law enforcement presence out there. Um, and again, it's whack-a-mole, we go wherever we're needed, uh, I have a team of folks, um, but there are only so many, and then we have to, uh, pull away from patrol for that. So, but, but where the fatalities are occurring, that's where we really have to focus, and that's on the highways. Unfortunately, um, state police has spread them, and so it comes down to us. So, we're gonna be looking at that, and we have a visitor out there in the window, Captain. Um, so the, the, and, and part of the bad news with that is we, we've, uh, ended up, we were full for a little while, and it's just how it works, it's cyclical, uh, with our, with our employees. Uh, we ended up, we're about, I think we're like almost ten down right now. However, we have twelve certified applicants. We've got a few in the academy, um, so we're, we're not, we're not hurting by any means. Um, it's kinda weird seeing that many certified applicants. Um, I can tell you it's a, that's a lesson that there's some law enforcement agencies that, that need to learn from that. They're, when you don't pay your people well enough and treat them good enough, they leave, and there's a, there's a, and it's not our county by any means, but there's a, a nearby agency that's losing people by the droves, and, uh, some of them are coming here. So, uh, I, I do appreciate, uh, Roberta and I were, have taken a look at to make, at our pay scale to make sure that we're still competitive, and I think we are. Um, there's, there's some minor discrepancies that we're looking at of maybe how people are hired in, that we can maybe adjust, I don't know, uh, but, but Roberta's been working very closely with me on that, and, uh, we're, we're, we're keeping an eye on it. So, also going with our applicants, uh, Ifra and, uh, crime scene investigator, we have several, uh, applicants. Uh, we're, I know the crime scene investigator. Uh, we're, I know the Crime Scene Investigator, we have some very highly qualified people applying. Uh, so that's really good. Our, uh, all of our vehicles were finally caught up amazingly enough after the, the auto worker strike. Uh, I think we have all of it. We do have all of our vehicles in. Um, the only thing, we have a little bit of a holdup with upfitting because of supply chain issues. I hate even saying that stupid term, but that's what it is. Uh, we, we can't get certain things still. The upfitter can't. So, we're, I think we ought to have all of our, all of it in. So, we're caught up. So, this new, new year coming up, this new budget year, we can refresh again and we can, we don't have to do carryover money and, yeah. Go figure. For once, we don't have to. So, uh, that's good news. Um, next Thursday from ten to one, uh, at Chavas County, I will be emceeing the New Mexico Legislative Update. Uh, it, it ought to be pretty good. I, I'm not able, we have four of them around the state. I'm just not able to make it to them as president. They, they'd like for me to be there, but I just can't make it, uh, to all of them. So, but that one, I will be there and I encourage you to come out to that. If you get a chance, it'll be, it'll be some good information, uh, straight from NMC, uh, and, and our, our analysts and our, our, our legal team. So, um, a lot's going on. I, I do wanna reiterate about our fair. It is very, it, it's, it's not common. By any means, it's actually very strange that the, the fair is not owned by the county, uh, in Eddy County. And, uh, they're doing a great job of what they have. They really are. And that's what we thought that, what they alluded to was back in twenty when, uh, they, the, the state tried to shut them down. I stepped in and we kept them open, uh, for the sale. It was kind of a tricky situation there. We skirted the boundaries of a few things. But I would really, really encourage you as a commission, as manager, to, to look at the, the Eddy County Fair. It's, I think it's a, I think it's a worthwhile thing to consider the, the county running it and, and utilizing, uh, all of our resources to, to provide it. So, again, that's, that's obviously your decision. I'm, I'm just making a, a statement there that, in support of taking a look at that. So, uh, that's where we're at, at the sheriff's office. We're, we're, we're chugging along, plugging along. Uh, we've got some more, uh, we, we got an MRAP from, uh, Sierra County. We, we finally have it. It's taken a long time. That's armor for our, uh, armored vehicle for our, our SWAT team. Um, because our old one, we were having issues with. We finally got it fixed and amazingly enough, they're letting us keep both of them. They're both not great. They're old. So, we're waiting on the Bearcat. This, we, we got pushed behind our, which if you remember, the Bearcat y'all authorized us to, to purchase last year. Um, and that's a, that's a modern armored vehicle. Um, it got pushed back because of all the conflicts that we have going on. The US military takes precedence and they kinda jumped ahead of us. So, we're, we got kicked back a little bit, but we'll still be getting that soon enough. And, uh, this way we're gonna be able to have armor south and north. So, whatever we need, we can use, we have the, the, the older MRAP that we have. It's a prototype. It's really wasn't suited for tactical team. We're gonna use, utilize that for a rescue like, uh, and, and we can, it might be a great benefit with Josh and, and them. Uh, that thing can go anywhere, a lot of places that other stuff can't. And for swift water rescue or something like that, uh, when we have some of the flooding. So, that's what we're gonna focus on with that. So, we have a lot of good projects, uh, coming up and, uh, my folks are working real hard to, uh, keep up with what, what's going on in the county. And we're growing by leaps and bounds. It seems like, it, it seems like something every day. So, uh, I, I would answer any questions that, that you would have for me. All right. Appreciate your support as always.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give an update on a project that has been in the works for way too long. Um, there's a couple of those. But, um, we have kinda finally taken off with the Rave, um, Smart 911 project. And, um, I just wanna say it's been, um, hard to bring everybody together, but there's been a lot of people that have been working together on it. Um, Mr. Burton and Mayor Henry and Mayor Lopez have been very supportive of this project. Um, Bambi with Rita and, uh, Katie Prell with, uh, CPD Dispatch and myself and, uh, my assistant, Marina, has been amazing at, uh, helping with this project. Um, as well as IT with Rita and, um, IT for the county. So, we've, uh, done some radio interviews to get the word out. We've done some newspaper articles out. Um, we just recently got asked to, um, present at the senior center to help seniors sign up for it. And so I brought some information. It's got, um, the QR code you have on here. You can just scan it. So, you guys can take those and then send it to, and notes if you guys want those to, to copy and post. And, um, other than that, did you guys have any questions? Just a brief description of what Rave 911 is for those that don't know what it is? So, there's a Smart 911 side of it, uh, where you can go in and actually type in, it's a smart profile, what they call a profile. Um, where if you call 911, um, this profile pops up for the dispatchers and it allows the dispatchers to then give information to the responders on any medical conditions you might have or, um, any pets, even pets in the house. You can go in and put your pets in the house and if there's a fire or something happens, you know, the firemen know that there are pets in the house. So, all of this information will pop up on the CAD system, um, and they'll be allowed to, to view it to, um, if there's a, a page, you know, a person that's a diabetic and, you know, can't speak, um, when they call 911, that profile will pop up so that the dispatchers know maybe they're having, you know, some type of diabetic episode or something like that. So, um, and then on the rave side, um, all agencies will have access to this rave, um, alert system. So, if there is a barricaded subject in a, a neighborhood, they have geopencing, which is where you can go up on the map and you can block off that, uh, neighborhood and say, okay, I'll be swammed to be held, um, you know, to tell them to shelter in place or whatever it may be that, you know, the agencies won't put out. So, um, and you can register with a cell phone, with a land, all landlines are all automatically registered. So, but you can register with your email, um, so we can text message the alerts, similar to what the school sent out. Any questions?
Super easy. I just did it. What time are you talking?
Is there any other elected official department comments? Okay. County manager comments? Um, have a few. I just wanna say again, congratulations to the finance team for the audit, the, the clean audit, um, no findings. Uh, big congratulations to you guys, not only to the finance department, but to all offices here in Eddy County. Going to what Commissioner Henry was saying, yes, Eddy County had, ha- has had an unmodified opinion for many years. One of the harder things to accomplish is not having any findings. And I know all of you department heads, elected officials know what I'm talking about because one of the examples I like to use is travel. Um, if an auditor were to pull a sample and you were supposed to get fifty-nine dollars for travel and you spent fifty-nine dollars and one cent, that comes as a compliance audit finding. So, it just tells you all the hard work that's not only put onto finance, but all the offices that comply with all the policies out there. So, thank you all very much. Um, also just wanna say thank you to the assessors office. Um, you guys really are the backbone and the starting point to everything that kind of happens and filters for property taxes here. You guys do an amazing job of evaluations and we see it every year with the high increase of evaluations. Um, so I just wanna say thank you and to all your team for everything you guys do. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Um, again, I'm glad Jennifer brought up the Smart 911 and the rave. Please, uh, you know, we're encouraging people to get out there and register. It's a, a really great program. You can put as much information as you want up there or as little information as you want up there. Um, so please at least go in and take a look at it. Um, like Karen mentioned, the school bond, um, election is currently going on, the mail-in ballots. The deadline is Friday. So, please, again, either way you vote, just get out there and vote, um, mail your ballots in, make sure you sign it and make sure you put the last word in your social when you're doing the mail-in ballots. Um, and then next week is gonna be a pretty busy week. Um, there's WIP, the twenty-fifth anniversary of WIP for the recognition. Um, on the twenty-sixth, um, there's a site visit at ten AM and there's a reception that evening. Um, as Sheriff Cage had said, there's a legislative update in Chavas County from ten to one on Thursday. If you can attend that. And then all administrative offices, um, will be closed half a day on Friday, Friday in, um, observance of Easter. And that's all that I have. I'll turn it over to questions.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to start by giving Jason Burns a big thank you on the roads. He's done a wonderful job and I'm here to say so. All the big jobs. I would also encourage our, my other commissioners not to let him off the hook on speed control. That said, I'd like to kinda go back to the fairgrounds. I've been in a lot of arenas and a lot of fairgrounds and, uh, lately following granddaughter around, uh, horses. Uh, we don't measure up to any of them in Eddy County. We really don't. I mean, anywhere you go, any county, reading up fairgrounds. I think it's a long-term deal and I think some consideration ought to be given to helping them out as much as we can up to maybe including hungry. I know there's some pushback against that, but they're fixing to put together a big twenty-five million dollar package and really fix that place up. And just out of a personal desire, I'd like to see, uh, force counsel part incorporated and done as well. Uh, with that said, everybody and every organization in this county stands out as being exceptional and all those of that.
All right. I got a quick short list. Um, but on the, uh, resolution agreements, it's always nice to see, um, Eddy County is able to donate so many apparatuses, whether it be fire trucks, police, from all kinds of different vehicles. Uh, we're able to help other counties that aren't as fortunate as us. So, always appreciate when y'all do the hard work to figure out who needs those and, and why they need them. Um, but getting them to those folks that need them. Uh, as far as, I guess that would be a theme today, uh, the fairgrounds, I don't disagree. I think the one thing I always have caution to is when the government owns property, it comes with government rules and government things in place. Uh, I think unfortunately what we learned a few years ago was a great learning, um, that if the government didn't own that property, uh, maybe some of those shutdowns that we might have tried to work around and we did work around them. I don't wanna be careful when I say that. But, uh, uh, there was some good workarounds. If the government didn't own that property, those workarounds could have possibly been, uh, different or easier or then we're completely out of it. Um, it's easy for looking at a board like this and a county manager like we have now. Um, but I've seen other times when, when maybe a board isn't as agreeable to all of that. Uh, making sure it stays open, making sure we're taking care of what we need to. So, anytime government owns property, it does make me nervous. I would rather have that in the hands of the private citizen, um, the best we can. Now, on the supporting side of it, I do think we, uh, we, I've had some great meetings with them, with, with y'all as well. Um, on some ideas on how do we support it more? What do we do more? Uh, it kinda went fast, but, uh, there, there has been a big push to, to, um, help the fair quite a bit more. And I'm glad Dylan was here because he was a big part of that, uh, making sure there's new concerts, making sure there's other things happening out there. I think our support went somewhere from thirty-five thousand a year to a hundred thousand and I think there's probably, um, advocating for more this year to go help put on a fair, a better fair. Um, but there are other avenues for us to, to possibly help. I think we're exploring what we're looking to come up with. Um, and I would be a big fan of anything that we can possibly do to help without government-owned property. Um, again, I just, I have a hard time government-owned property. I, I think there's, there's other ways to work around it if possible. And I would say that if possible. Um, as far as some other things that, that are constantly being said, um, the one thing I would point out with, when we hear about passive ordinances, um, I've yet to see an ordinance that is upheld. And correct me if I'm wrong, um, but the county has been very aggressive on other ordinance as well. I can go back to right to work. I can go back to many things in the county past that we thought we were in the rights to pass. And state law immediately came back and trumped us and said, no, your ordinance cannot supersede what we have as a state law. Thanks for playing. Now go away type of deals, what it very much felt like. Um, that right to work, I think, is one that we can really stand on quite well. There was a bunch of counties that did it. Um, we were one of those counties that fully still agree with, with that, um, ordinance. It wasn't ordinance, am I right? With that ordinance putting into place, um, I can remember that very next session. I can even tell you the representative, because I think it was one of the worst arguments I've ever heard on the floor. Basically going against our ordinances, um, immediately passing the law that trumps it and then that ordinance had to go away. So, it, we've gotta be careful when we're saying just do this because, uh, we've gotta make sure, you know, ordinance aren't, they're just, they're not able to trump what the state has already done. Uh, whether we agree with what the state has done or not, um, is a whole different subject. And I, I think we can all agree that most of the time on many of these things, I would say, um, that there's a significant amount that the state has done that we would not agree with as a county. Um, and we have put things in place, um, whether it be, uh, at least, uh, we moved it from a resolution to, or an ordinance to a resolution. But, uh, we are, uh, uh, what do we consider? What, I forget the word. Sanctuary County for abortion, we're sanctuary counties for guns. We're, I mean, we try to, so we put those resolutions. Resolutions have absolutely no bearing. Um, but it is our stance as a city body that that is what we believe in and that's what we're continuing to fight for. Um, so we just have to be careful on when we say those things, what does that really mean? If there was something, I think we would, uh, I would be very interested on all of these avenues. Um, again, like you said, we see many constitutional rights, I think, being violated, uh, by some laws that are passed. And I do think they're being challenged in court, which is a good place to do it. And, and I think they'll be overturned a great number of them. But, uh, we've gotta make sure we're fighting where we can and doing what we can, uh, in order to have those, uh, take place. The other thing I, I'd like to give credit, I really appreciate what the sheriff was saying. Uh, I know he says it's playing whack-a-mole, but I do know a lot of folks are making comments, which is good because that means they're seeing it, uh, with the police presence out on the highways. Um, folks are commenting that they're getting tickets. Um, they're not usually excited about that. Uh, but they are making those comments, which means the whack-a-mole game, I understand is whack-a-mole, but when it filters out there that, hey, they're pulling you over, slow down. I think it does help a little bit. Um, I'd say a little bit. Cause I think there was a speed home in Artesia and I think they were trying to jump it the other day. So, I'm not sure what, what you can do on some of those. But, uh, but I do appreciate, and I know it's being noticed in the public and, and I know it takes a lot for y'all to get that done, but, um, there is a big presence. I was really glad to hear Mill Road is on the list. We did have another big accident down there. A lot of folks are upset about why we don't have a stoplight already. I completely understand that. This Mill Road project has been in the works for almost two years now. Um, so hopefully we will see that soon and have some sort of stoplight to cross two eighty-five. I know twenty-sixth and thirteenth don't necessarily line up. Quickly, cause we're, I'm going kinda long, but I wanna also, you know, between the assessors and everything that y'all have to deal with and the clerk, I know you have had a, a few things come up lately that have kept y'all very busy. I appreciate the way y'all helped us with the city elections. Um, and then you have filing day and then you turn around and have another election. So, thank you all so much for everything you and your office does. Um, I know it's a lot. Um, I know there's a lot of rules and I know y'all have to make sure everything's done accordingly. But I really do appreciate it because I think, um, you know, as we talked in, in other counties, especially about elections, um, I can say, I can say it regularly and say it without a doubt, I do think we have. I do think we have one of the best run elections in the state, um, and I would definitely say that every single vote counts and counts correctly in this county, and that's, that's a testament to how well y'all run your office, um, and I appreciate it, I do quite appreciate it, so. That's all I have, thank you.
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Barrett said about, uh, our roads. We have the best roads that we've had in this county, and I know, because I was born and raised here in thirty years, and, uh, with that comes the other problem of, of the speeding, uh, I do know that when I first sat in office, one of the first ones we did was to work your road, and we're still having the problems with the speed before we redid it. Uh, you basically couldn't drive down it because it was in that bad a shape, and now, it's like a, like a Indianapolis five hundred, you know, going down through there at the end of the day and in the beginning of the day, so, uh, you know, with progress comes problems. And so that's what we're facing, and I think we should, uh, do a great job, and, uh, you know, there's only so many patrol people that you can hire and put on the highway, but we do, uh, we do great with what we have, so I appreciate that. The other part is, I agree a hundred percent with what, uh, Commissioner Henry said, in the fact that, you know, ordinances, there's no use in passing a bunch of ordinances that have no effect on anything, and just passing ordinance, the passing ordinance is not a good thing.
Okay, I have a couple of things, um, kinda echo off everybody else, but, uh, first, the southeast loop being completed this week is awesome. Last, two weeks ago, I asked Jason, he said two weeks, and here we are two weeks later, and it's, it is coming, coming true, so, good job. One point two million dollars in the budget, that's excellent. Um, congratulations to our finance department, to Brianna, Jessica, and everybody there for another unmodified internal audit, that's, really is exceptional, when you look at other counties and agencies around the state, it's not the case, so it's a testament to what, to who and what we have here. Our assessor's office, they gave some statistics that were startling, last year, nine hundred and eighty-one wells were drilled, three hundred and twenty-nine businesses were filed to be opened. And that led to three thousand new building permits countywide, over three thousand new building permits countywide, that's, that, that's amazing when you think about it, we're a small community, we're a small county, um, population-wise, and to have this much growth from industry creating new businesses to creating new building permits, I think that's truly just a testament to how fortunate we are in our part of the world. Eddie County Fair presentation. Commissioner Henry kinda stole my thunder there, because I agree with him a hundred percent, I really think that, uh, I, while I support the, the fair, and I support so, I support giving them more, um, it's hard to want to have a government-owned property that the community's going to, but just kind of the government being involved in all aspects of things isn't always the best, in my opinion. Sign up for Rave 911, Smart 911, I did it while Jennifer was talking, super simple, um, before she could finish, I, I was signed up, so it takes no time, guys. It's, uh, very useful, it will allow you to know what's going on, not only around you, but also in the vicinity. Outside of that, oh, next week's spring break week, so if you're traveling, be careful, if you're on your own, watch out for families and kids, and have fun, be safe, that's all I got.
Can you make a correction, I'm sorry, I need like one quick correction or something, I said, we're, I don't remember how that resolution, but sanctuary county four, abortion is the wrong word in there, so, I don't remember how that resolution reads, but it was, it was five, this would have been four or five years ago, when, when the state was passing it, all we were fighting for, and so passing it all, so. Need to make that correction, so nobody thinks that's a